Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, which was rescheduled from Monday night to tonight, Thursday, April 16th, 2020. This meeting will be held remotely and called into order late in the following pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town Council is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. I remind you that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192. You can also be posted right at the town's website at www.cii.southbridge.mas.us as soon as we are able to. This meeting is being broadcast live by Southbridge Cable Access and thank them for their participation. I'm going to now change to, uh, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. I have a pledge of allegiance for the flag for the United States of America. Moving on to Agenda Item 2, I remind you that all a roll call vote is required for all votes that will be taken or received under this order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
She's excused.
Is Counselor Lazo excused too, or absent?
Yeah, I'm going to call him absent. I don't know if he has remote access or not, but he didn't get a notice of the meeting.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steve.
Present.
Okay. Um, I think the only council that I'm not able to see this evening will be Counselor Steve's. So in the event that we have discussion, what I'll do is I'll, I'll go around to the people that I can see if they raise their hands, and then I'll come on, make sure that I go to Counselor Steve's, uh, for any, uh, questions that he might have, okay? Counselor Steve's.
Okay, thanks, Jack.
Item 3, considering accepted special Town Council minutes of Friday, March 20th, 2020. Do I have a motion on that?
No move. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Adams, a second by Counselor Catrona. Does anybody have any errors, corrections, or omissions? I'll go around and ask Counselor Adams anything that needs to be amended on that.
I do have a question that may be amended. On the item number 10, did item number 10, I, I, was there, was it an eight zero vote, or was it a seven oh one vote?
What was that agenda item? I don't have that handed around for second.
Uh, that was discussion as to declaring a local state of emergency in town Southbridge relative to the COVID-19 state emergency and to take any action, declaring that the local state of emergency shall be declared.
I believe Counselor Marquetti voted no on that. Is that correct, Counselor Marquetti?
Um, I don't think so. I don't rem, I don't recall, I'll tell you the truth.
Okay.
No, no, you're all right.
Yep.
You're right.
I don't mean to laugh, Mr. Chairman, I just saw his hair being.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh, Counselor Marquetti's hairstylist was taking care of his hair.
Yeah, I know, I, that's okay. That's watching it live.
So I do believe that vote was seven to one on that. I do believe Counselor Marquetti was opposed to that. Is that correct, Counselor Marquetti?
You're right.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Adams. Anything else, Counselor Adams?
No, sir.
Counselor Marquetti, any errors, corrections, or omissions on the Friday, March 20th meeting?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Catrona?
No.
Counselor Nash?
No.
Counselor Steve's?
No.
Okay. Uh, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Steve.
Yes. Thank you. And that was, uh, motion as amended, just for the record, okay? Uh, Item 3B, considering accepted Town Council minutes of Monday, March 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
No move.
So I got, so I have a motion and a second, Counselor Steve's, and I believe it was, I give it to Counselor Catrona, I think it was pretty close there. Any errors, corrections, or omissions, Counselor Adams? No. Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Catrona?
No.
Counselor Nash?
No.
Counselor Steve's?
Oh.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, general government, Counselor Steve's.
Uh, we met last night. Uh, as you know, we discussed, uh, the budget sections at length. Unfortunately, I had a technical difficulty, so thank you for taking over in the middle of the meeting time. Um, and we don't have anything scheduled.
Thank you. Um, we did record that meeting, so I will be happy to share that with any councils as they wish to have a copy of that so that they can be brought up to speed of what transpired in that general government subcommittee. The Department of Public Works would be Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, no new items to bring up, uh, later on in this agenda. I know we have, uh, review of the schedule for committee budget meetings. DPW is slated for the 20th, which is Patriot State, so we have it on Tuesday, the 21st at 6:30. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Education and Human Services is Counselor Lazo. Um, we do, everybody should have a schedule of what those meetings are, and I don't believe he has anything else. And Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We did have our budget meeting last evening at 6:00 PM. Um, the, I did receive the recording from you today via email of that meeting, and I will probably most likely send that over to, uh, Mary for transcription, if that's okay. Um, that's, we don't have anything scheduled here, um, in the near future for next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection in person and property, I know Counselor Man is, uh, has a meeting scheduled for the budget as well, and that should be in your package. I do have special committee reports, typically we have this under subcommittees, but I just kind of broke it up just for fluid, uh, make it fluid. So curbside advisory committee, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have our next meeting scheduled, uh, it was originally scheduled for the 7th of April. I pushed it out until 21st of April. It's at, at 3:00, it's going to be, uh, remote, sort of meeting. Will Knoyer has, uh, Mr. Knoyer has already set everything up. I've sent out invites for this meeting to all, uh, committee members, so they, I'm hoping that they received it. Um, I'll verify by on Monday. Everything is going well. We are right now in the middle of, um, the presentation of what it's going to look like. Uh, we still have a little bit of discussions that are still being had on, uh, how some things may go, uh, but right now, uh, basically this next meeting will be of what the presentation, um, generally will look like, uh, and adding in will be multiple options and the financial options as well.
Thank you. Any questions of Counselor Adams? Thank you for that hard work with you, Counselor Marquetti, Counselor Steve's on that. We look forward to your report, uh, and the finality of recommendations. Town manager's search committee, Counselor John Daniel. We do have the search committee up. Uh, they did meet, I'll let him bring you up to speed over there, that's transfer. Counselor Daniel.
Very good. We received one response to the RFP. Uh, the search committee reviews, reviewed the proposal, and we opted to call references on the proposal. Uh, we heard from at least six references. Um, all were very, very positive and rated the, uh, proposal as highly advantageous, rated the principal firm as highly advantageous. Um, we moved on to a face-to-face virtual meeting with the principal of the company, and that also went very well. Um, he brought along two of his associates that will be working, that would be working with us as well, so it's a, a committee of three people that they have that would be with us. Um, made very good presentations, they, uh, they sound good, they look good, answered all our questions. Um, so afterwards, we met virtually, and we decided that we had received, uh, a very good proposal, both, um, paper and in person, and as a result of the process, the committee recommends, um, using community paradigm, um, as the firm to assist the search committee in its search, and as a result, we have Agenda Item Number 14, I believe, on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Counselor Daniel? Good, thank you. Um, I do have the COVID-19 Public Health and Safety briefing update. I know we had an extensive meeting last week with that update. I did, uh, plan on just leaving this on the agenda for each of our meetings, just in case there is any update. So we'll have, um, uh, quick brief updates from whatever changes were from last Wednesday to today. Uh, we'll start with Director Inspections, Public Health Agent Andrew Pelletier. Mr. Pelletier?
Good evening, thank you. Um, the Board of Health for the last week has been pretty busy with this. Um, we have worked with the schools and identified two, oh, I'm sorry, let me start with, we have currently 36 total cases in town. Um, 13 of these cases have been closed, and we still have tw, uh, 23 active cases. The state has done a reversal of their policy, and they are themselves reporting the active ca, I mean, the number of cases in every town. Originally, they had said they are not going to report that, and they encouraged us not to, uh, but they've done a turnabout. You'll see their number doesn't always agree with our number. Um, some of that is because they assigned us some cases that we later found out weren't actually relevant to Southbridge. I believe we have three such cases. Um, and there is a, sometimes it's delayed, they report every day at, uh, 4:00, but sometimes the numbers I report might be at 8:00 in the morning, or they could be afternoon, so, um, they, they won't always coincide with the exact same number. Um, the Board of Health, I mentioned it last week to the council, that we were seeking the assistance of two nurses from the schools. Um, we have got the two nurses on board as of this morning, they were sworn in, we assigned them their first two cases. We are still working with the schools on the, um, uh, funding that position, but it will be funded 100% out of the COVID money that we receive from the state, it will not come off of any town of Southbridge monies. Um, we have also cross-trained Alicia, I've been doing a lot of the, uh, Maven, Alicia has now taken on a lot of the Maven data entry, so we will be working with the nurses on paper, they will bring it to Alicia, she will confirm their findings, and she will be the one entering them into the Maven. Maven is the software reporting for, uh, any communicable disease. The reason we're not allowing the nurses direct access to Maven is because all of the towns communicable disease are reported on Maven, and obviously, we want them to have access to what they need to have access to to get the job done, but we don't need them to have access to, uh, capillobacter diseases and, and other such communicable diseases. So we're trying to keep the minimum access to Maven that we can in order to, um, appreciate HIPAA, uh, the total caseload of everything we deal with. Um, the state has initiated Community Tracing Collaborative. What that essentially is, is any town that they think is not responding quickly enough to the cases, they are going to take over. They've hired every intern, every public health intern, every not-working nurse that they can find, and they have an army of people to use the Maven. They are going to supersede us, put their people on Maven, and take our cases if we don't keep up with them. This is why we are looking to get the two nurses and Alicia cross-trained so that, um, reality, I want to keep our cases in Southbridge, that'll make it that much easier to report the addresses to the state, uh, to the police and fire. That will also keep HIPAA where it belongs. We, we really don't want to spread across, uh, the whole state. Um, last week, there was talk on the homeless shelter, um, or the assistance for the homeless. I'm sure that, uh, Chief Woodson and Chief, uh, Paul Normandin will, um, add into this, but we got the shelter up and running right before the windstorm, so we immediately shut it down again for fear that it was going to collapse in the wind. Um, uh, it is up and running right now, um, we are happy with the sanitation he put in place, with the structure he put in place, so we do have capacity for 11 persons above and beyond the capacity of the building. Um, the Board of Health met today, uh, we're having a special meeting every week from 5:00 to, hopefully, we can close it at 6:00, but just to talk about what's going on, update the Board on the, uh, on the current issues, and possibly look at ways we can further curtail the, um, the spread of the disease. Today, we talked about several issues from investigating food workers to, uh, masks, um, to litter. Uh, the Board voted today that, recognizing that the state has not put a mandate on masks when you leave the building, that it's only a recommendation, but we as a Board are going to go one step below the state and mandate that all food workers wear masks during their shift, so that we can minimize any exposure to any kind of food that people are going to bring home and adjust. So that's where the Board of Health is sitting right now, they have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. How was it that the workers were able to be sworn in before the council vote?
The, this is actually a, under Chapter 111, Ron and I sat down and, and scrutinized the charter. The charter, from what we could find, the charter gives authority to Ron to appoint officers and inspectors with councils', um, with councils' approval, but the charter is silent on any other positions in town. It actually shocked us that it, that we couldn't find anything on any other positions in town. So I went searching through the general laws. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 111, Section 30, allows boards of health to appoint agents to work on their behalf. So this was an appointment by the Board of Health. If you need that number, it's Chapter 111, Section 30.
Well, that gives the authority of the Board of Health to appoint rather than confirmation of council?
Correct. The, the charter is silent on employees other than officers of the town. At least I couldn't find anything, and I sat with Ron and we discussed it, and we searched, we couldn't find it.
Okay, for now. I'm on my way for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Steve's, did you have a question?
I did, thank you. Um, two, actually. One is, um, you mentioned people, uh, food deliver, food people having to wear masks, does that apply to people delivering as well?
We, that will be applying to anybody who's handling food for anybody other than their family. So if you are delivering it, if you are stocking the shelves that, that Cumberland Farms, any food handling.
Okay. And also, when you mentioned the case numbers, and you said that 13 were closed, um, how many of those people were actually recovered? Is that, is that recovered, and I know that, I think one person died?
We have, we have one that passed, so of the 13 that are closed, 12.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Good, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, Vincent Commander, Chief Woodson. Good evening, Chief.
Yeah, and good evening, just real quick, Mr. Chairman, uh, just to kind of touch on what, uh, Mr. Pelletier had said about that shelter, excuse me, I was initially very concerned about that and the problems that could happen over there, we'll say, uh, but after meeting with Andy, Mr. Julian, the fire chief, uh, the members of the Town Council that showed up over there, and Dr. Howell, and they, they set my mind at ease, I think it's being done correct, I think it needs to be done, we absolutely need it in this community. I'm very satisfied with, with the Board of Health and inspections, and, uh, their, what they put them through to get that up and running, to make sure that it's done safely, effectively, and more importantly, that it's not permanent, it's only being done now because of the pandemic, because of the urgent need, the emergency-type situation, so I'm absolutely on board with that, to have that knock on wood, no issues so far, but it's, it's still early, so we'll kind of play that by year. Um, as far as my department, and again, I don't, certainly don't want to jinx us, but we're holding steady at, uh, there's been no time missed yet, uh, just a couple of days for a test, but it came back negative, so that's a great thing. Uh, the hospital, I gotta give them a, uh, kudos to them, they instituted a, uh, they got the technology now to clean our N95 masks, and we are essentially bringing, bringing them there two days a week, pretty quick turnaround where they get them back to our people the next day. So each of my offices currently has about five N95 masks each, and you can clean them, and I know the fire chief probably knows a lot more about this than me, but I believe you can clean them up to like five or 10 times, or something like that with this type of technology. So as we sit here today, we're doing very well with PPE for all of our staff, and I think, uh, we're going to be okay depending on how this thing turns, but tomorrow, I know the fire chief and I are going to get together and discuss, uh, MEMA and this new mask that became available also. So I, I think overall, the police department's doing fine. If any citizens are asking you why they see police officers on the streets, uh, wearing masks, because that's now directed from me, it comes down through the state and what the mass chiefs of police is recommending, whenever you have contact, going to course your duties to wear a mask, but I know it's becoming pretty common now, everybody in the community has masks on if you go to any of our stores or things like that, it's just become the new norm, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. Emergency Operations Center, Emergency Management Director, Chief Normandin.
Good evening, everybody. I always like to kind of go last because the, uh, a lot of the things that I was going to bring up, uh, the, the St. Luke's Guest House and, um, and, uh, the other couple of the things that we've talked about have already been spoken about, so thank you, everybody, uh, for having me on tonight. Um, I just want to say that the EOC has been working very well for all of us, and hopefully, if you do see the briefings that we send out every day, uh, that is up-to-date information. Uh, we all work hard to stay in contact with each other, even though we're not meeting every day, um, we stay in contact, and we try to get all the up-to-date numbers in regards to that, push out to the citizens. It's very important, because I think what we need to remember is that we're all still waiting for the surge to happen. Uh, every morning at 8:15, uh, we meet, uh, Deputy Chief and, uh, Fire Chief, and also I know the police department, we sit on the Harrington Hospital's, um, conference call that they have. Um, I've been sitting there day after day, waiting to see those numbers go up of admitted patients with COVID, uh, positive tests. Um, I'm going to knock on wood, like the Chief Woodson had said, uh, that that number has been holding, holding steady at this point. Um, again, the plans for a surge is very important, and it's, it's ready to go. Um, if we, we have the capacity of doing about 250 people at the armory, if this all happens to, uh, blow up, as we should say in regards to this. Um, so there are still a lot of things going on at the EOC. Um, again, Chief Woodson and I will meet with, uh, MEMA notified us today that we're getting, uh, more N95 masks for that, um, and we'll be working on that. I just, an important note that, um, I want to say to the citizens, uh, thank you very much for your patience in regards to the storm on Monday, uh, this wind rain, uh, swept storm that came through, uh, we had multiple trees down in regards to that, um, the fire crews and the, and the police department were all over town, um, trying to keep people away. Luckily, you know, I'm not luckily, but during this pandemic, there weren't a lot of vehicles on the road, uh, but I do know through social media and phone calls at the fire station, and I'm sure at the police station, were, were less, um, after the fact. Uh, the National Grid Company was contacted, uh, uh, pretty quickly, right after we, uh, the downtown power situation went out, um, it affected the nursing home and the hospitals, so those two facilities are critical infrastructure for towns, obviously, for, for their nature of their business. Um, so that was an immediate call right away to our representative at, uh, National Grid. Uh, it did take probably five or six hours to get that core up, but, uh, I, to the citizens, I, I want to thank you, it was definitely, um, the best, I would say, the best, uh, uh, response. Uh, we got very little flack, I'll say, from either social media or phone calls. Um, I know it's in difficult times in a pandemic, and you're in your home, and you are relying on internet and electric, uh, electricity to keep your family amused, or whatever you're doing, and the power went out. So again, thank you, uh, we'll, we'll all get through this, and just clean your hands, that's my report.
I have a quick question, Jack. Is that okay?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Steve's.
Yeah, um, that's due you to Paul. Um, you mentioned setting up the armory, I'm just curious, how long would it take to set that up, and where are the supplies coming from?
So at this point, we have a couple of containers that are behind the armory, uh, now you've probably never even noticed them, so we have, uh, multiple, uh, cots. Um, I could say probably we could get that all set up with the cots, and, uh, I would probably call in a, a bunch of fire, get firemen in to come help us do that. Um, and obviously, the tri-epic group people, insert members from the area will come in and help us set the armory up for that. I could say probably, I don't know, six or eight hours to get that all set up and running. Harrington Hospital, remember, is the key, uh, organization that will be operating the ISQ, um, so I'm sure their staff would be available to come down, uh, they have already evaluated the site along with the IT needs that may have, may need to happen. So other than opening up the containers right now and, and pushing everything out onto the, uh, the gymnasium floor and making it work, we're pretty ready to go. So, yeah, I would say, Gus, to be honest with you, six to eight hours to get that all set up and, and functioning.
Okay, cool, thank you. Um, also, a quick question back to Andy. Um, earlier, you mentioned, uh, you mentioned the potential for surge and stuff like that, and I know the state is looking for people to do tracing, um, do we have any particular program in town to, uh, to recruit people to do tracing?
Um, I'm not sure I understand the question. Do we have any people in town to do tracing? The two nurses that we just named are, have, are to beef up our staff and, and help us do the tracing. As of right now, with the flow we're getting, those two nurses should be adequate, those two nurses, plus Alicia, myself, and our public health nurse, should be adequate to keep up with the flow. If it spikes, I will probably have to either go back to the school to see if they have any other nurses that wish to help us, or accept the help of the state and, and use the, uh, tracing program.
Oh, okay, okay. I wasn't sure if you had like vol, like set up for volunteers or things like that, and exactly what it requires, so, okay, thanks.
Chief, uh, Woodson, you had another item.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I apologize, I just, uh, I did not mention the storm on Monday, but I, I didn't think the fire chief would say it, so I'll say it for him. Um, it got pretty crazy there on Monday for a little while, and I had about 20 police officers in the street, and we ran out of police officers, we had to call additional help, and, and I had the fire chief, believe it or not, I called him, our communications went down, it's going to be something that we're going to have to address at some point when this COVID-19, when the pandemic is finally over. But, uh, just kudos to the fire chief, I wanted to thank him, uh, for being out in the wind and the rain, climbing around the ground, uh, trying to get one of those generators up and running. Our comms were downtown wide, and they absolutely would not have gotten back up as quickly as they had if the fire chief didn't step up and run out there for me, you know, with like 30 seconds' notice, so I appreciate that, chief, and I just also wanted to thank Heather Blakely from the DPW, she had her guys, they basically dropped everything, and we had her men, um, you know, standing at a post, guarding trees, wires, cutting things up, dragging things, moving things, so just thank you for the, for everybody in public safety in the DPW for stepping up on Monday, because it was a pretty crazy day.
Thank you, chief. Um, on behalf of the town, and, uh, and, uh, we're involved in the Emergency Operations Center, want to thank you all for the hard work that you do, and everybody that's involved with the Emergency Operations Center. You get a lot of information out through the Facebook Live that you do every week, so thank you for that as well, and I think you did your Facebook Live earlier today at 2:00, and I think by 4:00, you had about 1,600 views on the police department, because everybody follows the police, which is nice, um, so thank you for that. Moving on to Chairman's announcement, in a minute, we'll have State Representative Peter Durant, um, here, to offer some words after the Town Manager's announcements. Just a couple of things, first off, um, I'll just mention the schools, and thank the schools for the feeding program that they're putting on, when we got our brief on Monday, they're averaging over 700 meals to the students of Southbridge, uh, and their families. Uh, next Monday will be a holiday, so I know it's probably going to be in the brief as well, but just for those people that are watching cable today, Monday will be a holiday, the 20th, and I believe that they're going to double up on the meals on Friday, uh, so make sure that, uh, those who are, uh, that are taking in that mail know that there's no feeding on Monday, but there'll be additional food, uh, to those stops on Friday. Like to thank the police department for their reading program to the kids, as well as the fire department, and I think they have kind of a joint, uh, competition going to see who can get more FaceTime, but thank you for that, for reading to the kids, it's important It's important that those kids that are home, and it looks like, I don't have any official word, but looking like everything is trending, most likely, schools will stay closed. So thank you for all the outreach that your departments are doing. Also, the school teachers that participated in that school drive-through, where they drove through the town, that was a great thing to see. For all the students out there that are homebound, and for the teachers to take that upon themselves to do that parade. Likewise, to the Fire Department, the Easter Bunny Parade that went through the town, a lot of positive feedback for all those people that are home. And I guess on tomorrow, at point tomorrow afternoon, Harrington Memorial Hospital is gonna have something to recognize, I think public safety is going through, to recognize all the healthcare workers. So it is a difficult time in our town, our country, and I'd like to thank all the councilors for all the hard work that they're doing, the patience that they have in these meetings. Last night's meeting with the General Government and Plan Development was a marathon, probably five hours, and it was very difficult to do remote participation-wise. But thank everybody for the work last night, because I think we were, given all the roadblocks that we have and the difficulties in communication and internet slowdowns, we actually got through that in a pretty painless way. Out of the budget, and I'm sure as we move forward, and we find out where our revenues are at, even more tough discussions. A reminder that nomination papers are still due. I believe next week is the deadline for that, and the deadline has not changed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So anybody that has nomination papers out there for Town Council or School Committee, make sure you check the town's website and make arrangements with the town clerk. Town clerk's office is working Monday through Friday, well, actually, Monday through Thursday because they're closed Thursday night and Friday night, on Fridays. So make sure you contact the town clerk's office and make arrangements to get your papers, and we look forward to everybody stepping up. There's a lot of hard work. I think any councilor here will tell you how hard it is, but we do it because of service to our town. So get those papers in. I think that's all I have right now. Town Manager's announcement. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to do something that I don't do often enough. I want to start off by thanking the citizens of Southbridge. I've had an opportunity to go to Big Bunny, to go to Big Y, see people going. It's nice to see everybody with masks on. At the beginning of this, there was a few people that had them on. Now, when you go into those supermarkets, you see that almost everybody has it on, and it's the hard work of the people and the respect of the people that's keeping this virus from spreading. I also want to show appreciation to all those stores that are open, the people that are working at those stores they are now. I talked to some of the people at Big Y, they're all required to wear masks, but it's really nice to see them every day, you know, providing that service to be able to get food to other people that need it. If you look at the supermarkets, you'll see they've designed paths through the store to keep people six feet apart. They have people setting up the lines as the cashiers. They are doing an outstanding job to make sure that people can get the food they need and do it in a very safe way. So I wanted to put my appreciation to all of them, the citizens and the store owners. You know, during the storm the other day with the wind going and everything else, you know, there was, you know, I had heard about the power lines, and you guys all realized we lost power at our home. And one of the things that I like to do in those situations is go to the Police Department and watch the dispatchers at work, because to get a true understanding of an emergency is to sit in that dispatch center and watch the dispatchers do their job. And nowhere, I think there was either eight or nine power lines down, dispatchers were handling the power lines, the storms, claws that were coming in. It's chaotic, but the true professionalism of these people just always amazes me, and it gives you a sense of the work that's being done on behalf of the people. And if the councilor is interested to really see that and see how hard that position is dedicated the people there are, please let the chief know. I'm sure he would allow you to sit there for an hour or so and watch their activities, but I think you'll be extremely impressed by that. We really owe, you know, we always thank the police officers, the firemen, the DPW workers, but those dispatchers are, they're right there in the mix of things, and it's a very stressful job, and they do one hell of a job. I want to, once again, every week, I want to, I'm always gonna say, I want to say thank you to all my employees, the department heads, the staff that is, they're doing an outstanding job in a very difficult time, reaching out and doing everything that they can to help our customers, which are the citizens of the town. Kudos to Heather and Andy. We had an handicap person who had issues with their trash in the windstorm, the stuff was blowing all over the road. They went way out of their way to help that individual, and that individual called me a number of times to thank me for the outstanding job that both Andy Pelletier and Heather did with her team to help this particular resident who needed a helping hand at a very difficult time. So it shows once again the dedication of my team. It's very appreciated. Up at the airport, I think you guys are all aware, we're working on replacing the fuel system up there, the fuel tanks. And as you know, there's a timing issue with that. I was part of the pre-construction meeting today. We did a phone conference on the pre-construction along with Rick Lemmons, the Airport Chairman of the Airport Commission, and Ron, and a lot of the construction people and the engineering people. The project still is on plan, and the plan, obviously, is to finish it by the end of June to meet the state's fiscal year. It's going to be close. They're working very hard to make sure that that occurs. It is, I know that you guys have seen the construction has stopped all over the state, but this is one of the exceptions to the rule in construction because it's a airport facility for safety. Obviously, airplanes need gasoline. I asked them that question today, and they assured me that it is an exempt project and they can move forward with it. In order to receive the state funding, the money has to be basically allocated or encompassed, I know I'm using the wrong word. But anyway, it has to be, all the bills have to be pretty much set up, and all the physical work have to be done by June thirtieth. So I feel good that the Airport Commission, the Airport Manager, everybody's on top of it, and they're working it through, and I believe that will be a successful project. You know, there's an old fuel tank in the ground. There's no thought that there might be any contamination leak. Everybody feels good that the tank is right at the end of life, it's double-walled, and we believe it's in shape and there's no leaks, but obviously, they're not gonna fully know that until they pull it out of the ground. But everybody is on top of the project, and I feel like it's moving well. I want to thank the General Government and P and D members last night. The chair was quite clear, it was a long meeting last night, but it went over well, and I appreciate the support of all those councilors, the support of the budget work we're doing, and we have a lot of work to do, but I'm confident that this team of people can put together a good product and protect the citizens in the long run. My last comment I wanted to make is I was a little, I'm a little frustrated, as you know, about the revenue situation. And I sent out a comment because we're in a sort of a chain mail of Town Managers and Town Administrators, and I was seeing some administrators, one or two saying they wanted to, you know, use local money to help businesses and those kind of things. It surprised me because I know that everybody's facing the same kind of revenue losses as we are, and I'm wondering how they could provide these extra services. And I got, and I got the response back, and it turned out that it was a Town Administrator of a very wealthy town, and they've had ninety-six percent of their collections are already in. Unfortunately, that's not the situation where we are, but most Town Managers, and talking to Karen, talking through her accounting network, are facing the same revenue issues we are. So it's not surprising, it's common throughout the state, and all of us are dealing with it. I wanted to note that I was in an MMA conference call with all Town Administrative Town Managers, with the Lieutenant Governor, with the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and as you know, in those conference calls, they allow you to ask questions. I asked the question, is this, does the state have any plan to help municipalities with the revenue losses that the towns are sustaining as a result of this virus? The answer at this time was the state has no plans to do that. The MMA president made a point of saying, well, that may be true now, the state is focusing on new expenses as it relates to the virus and paying bills of that kind of stuff, but they aren't looking at the revenue loss. The MMA assured me and made it clear to the state officials that the MMA was gonna be driving hard to look at trying to get the state to help with local revenue loss from municipalities. So I wanted to make sure it was on the table statewide. I think it is on the table, but I would encourage, and I know that our representative is on the phone, encourage our state rep and state senator to push hard for legislation that helps towns, because making up that revenue is gonna be extremely difficult, not just for Southwood, but for towns and cities across the state. So I place it on the table. Hopefully, we'll make some progress as a result of that discussion, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Very pleased to have Representative Durant here tonight for a few minutes. I thought it was important that he can be with us if he has any words that he can bring us from the State House and any comments that he wants to make during this pandemic. Welcome, Representative Durant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to say that I thought I was getting off the hook easy. Chief Norman said earlier that it's good to go last because you get to check off all the things that you were gonna talk about because other people talk about them. So I thought I was gonna get off easy until the Town, the Town Manager brought up all the state revenue. So I just want to say, Ron, I appreciate that. So, you know, on the legislative side, we are working hard. As you are well aware, we're passing legislation, we're looking to grease the wheels of local and state government to try to keep things moving during this crisis. We, right now, as we look at, here we are on the sixteenth, we would be in the process of filing our amendments to the budget in preparation for our budget deliberations, which would typically take place in a couple of weeks. Obviously, that hasn't occurred. We're trying to do sessions, we don't get the luxury necessarily to do sessions remotely. They're basically done as informal sessions where we have to, certain people go in, and then you try to rotate in and try to have discussions by video conference, conference with small people, small groups of people. So it's been really trying, and as you can imagine, we're trying to move a lot of legislation through. We have been successful in moving a lot of legislation through to help the cities and towns. Unfortunately, as the Town Manager mentioned, we have not taken up any legislation to make towns whole or to make up that revenue. As you probably know, we have a rainy day fund in the state that, at least about a month and a half ago, was very healthy at about three and a half billion dollars, and now we're talking about significant drops in our revenue and obviously dipping into that pretty heavily. So we're all scrambling. Revenues, of course, are down with the stock market crashing recently, capital gains are gonna be down. So we're kind of all in that position. And moving forward, I think we're still trying in many instances just to kind of put the fingers in the dyke, to try to plug those holes where they come in. We are going to, as we move forward and as we start to get on the backside of this, I think there will be opportunities to take up some of that legislation, some of the ideas of how we might push money out to cities and towns when, you know, if we're able to do that. We don't even have a date right yet for budget deliberations. As I mentioned, we're still trying to figure out. So far, with legislation, it's been okay, because when you have specific legislation, you can go in when you need to, you can work in small groups, but as a budget, you're really working as a whole two-hundred board membership. So it's really difficult to do, and we don't even have a plan, I don't wanna say a plan, but we don't have a resolution as to how we might do all of that. As you guys know, some of the things that we passed, just to kind of touch on some of the things, you know that MCAS in the schools have been postponed or canceled. We've done certain things that have allowed cities and towns to push out and postpone their elections to try to get, to try to get back on the backside of this. We've allowed cities and towns to work off one-twelve budgets, as well as regional school districts, things like that. We have worked on letting restaurants and provide liquor sales with their takeout business to try to help keep them in business. Some of the other things, we've removed the annual cap on hours for retirees that are currently collecting a pension, so it gives them the ability to come in and provide help as they may be needed and not have to worry about going over their hours. We've allowed cities and towns to extend property tax payments. That's a nice thing to do. Of course, that puts you guys in a difficult situation too, if you have to start extending those payments because you're not getting them. So we're trying to do a bunch of different things. I think one of the things that I feel a lot with, whether it's, you know, some things related to the town, but on a constituent basis, and I want to kind of address the people who may be watching this, is the unemployment situation here in Massachusetts. As we sit here today, we're approximately half a million people out of work and looking for unemployment benefits. As you can imagine, that has just completely overwhelmed our unemployment system. And so we're getting a lot of frustrated people who are calling us rightfully so, who are telling us that they can't get through, they're not getting callbacks, and they're not getting their checks yet. I have talked to people in unemployment, I talk to them quite a bit, and my aide, everybody knows Anne Goddard, who's doing yeoman's work on helping people get their unemployment claims in. But I've talked to some people over there in unemployment. Again, you've got about a half a million people who have applied for unemployment, and I know the state just hired an extra one hundred people. But even if you say, gee, they have an extra hundred people, that's still five thousand cases per person that they have to get to. So it's taking a while, and so I just want to ask for a little bit more patience as we kind of work through this. We do have some information that just came out recently regarding the CARES Act, which is the federal unemployment portion. So basically, what you got, and I'm gonna have to read this to make sure, it's a little bit complicated, but, so the federal unemployment has two components to it. The CARES Act puts out what's called Pandemic Unemployment Assistance. This is unemployment assistance for those people who are not W-two employees, right? So if you're self-employed, if you have a small business, and you're, or you're a ten-nine-nine, maybe you're driving for Uber, or any, what they call gig employees, right? So you get a ten-nine-nine instead of a W-two, you were not eligible for regular state unemployment. So the CARES Act, the federal unemployment, has made that available to people, and that can be applied for, starting on the twentieth of this month, so starting on, what's that, Monday, people can apply for that. The state is using a separate vendor for that to help us out with that situation, but the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance for ten-nine-nine people is going to be active on Monday. On the other side, the second portion of that is the pandemic, is the Federal Pandemic Unemployment Assistance, which sounds very similar, except it says federal in front of it. So the Federal Pandemic Unemployment Assistance allows those people to get, actually, everybody to get their extra six hundred dollars, right? So everybody's gonna wear that. On the state side, you get your unemployment, which is equal to about half of your regular weekly wages, plus the federal unemployment through the Pandemic Unemployment Act, is where you get your extra six hundred dollars from. We have had reports of some people getting that. This comes automatically. So some people are already getting their six hundred, others are not, but it is on the way, and that is coming as well. And finally, we're getting a lot of questions about the stimulus checks, the twelve-hundred-dollar checks, plus the dependents. Those checks are being mailed. There is and was some confusion about whether or not you had to file your two thousand nineteen taxes, and I think the federal government changed back and forth once or twice on that. But at this point, it is, we do not believe that you have to have filed your two thousand nineteen taxes, which of course, we all know, the deadline has been extended out. And so I can confirm, we have people who are getting their stimulus checks, we have not filed their taxes yet, and others who have filed are getting them. So they are coming in. You are also going to get a check if you have not paid taxes for reasons, I put on Facebook, for reasons other than I just don't like paying taxes, right? So if you're retired or disabled, or even somebody who's just coming into the workforce, say you're eighteen years old and you're just coming into the workforce and you really haven't had a job yet, those people are eligible. There is a website through the IRS where you can go in and put your banking information. It's a really long web address that I won't give you now, I mean, it's really long, but if you go to my Facebook page, you go to Facebook, I posted a link there on my Facebook page, Peter Durant's Facebook page, and I just encourage everybody, if you want to get that direct deposit, you haven't filed taxes before, you're worried about it, you can go to the IRS site. Just please be careful, because, you know, there's a lot of scammers out there who want to take advantage of this situation, and there's a lot of phony IRS sites up that look exactly like the IRS site and want to get your banking information. So please, please be very, very careful about where you're going. If you want to go to Facebook, you can find the link there. If not, just don't do a Google search. Go to the IRS website, type in IRS.gov. the IRS website, type in IRS.gov, and go directly to the site to get that information. Other than that, I'm happy to answer questions. I just want to say, I think you guys are doing yeoman's work out there. I'm really impressed at all of my cities and towns in the professionalism that's come out and the way people have come together on this. And it really worked hard to really make sure everything's working well. And you guys are doing great. And any questions I can answer, I'm more than happy to. Thank you, Representative Durant. Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Thank you, Mr. Durant, for joining us this evening. My question is backing up to the PUA, those without the W-2s. You say it's available. Is that going to be online? Is that in paper form?
Yes, it will be online, and it will be online and available on the 20th. I'm going to put you on hold for a second. So there's a web address for that, and this one's not too bad, so I'll read it. It's ui-cares, C-A-R-E-S, dash, act, A-C-T, dot, M-A-S-S, dot, G-O-V, slash, P-U-A. You can find it on the Massachusetts unemployment website, but that's the address, ui-cares- dash, dash, act, dot, mass, dot, gov, slash, P-U-A. And that's going to be available, ready for those applications, on the 20th.
That's all I have. Thank you, once again.
You have a town manager? You got something? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Peter, I know that kind of brought up a difficult issue, and I want to thank you because whenever I need support or call you, you're extremely responsive to the town. So thank you for that. In the MMA discussion I had, I think they were also talking about, if you look at what's happening in Congress, they were talking about a fourth incentive kind of bill, and part of that was infrastructure and helping local governments. So now, I do recognize that the state is facing the same problem we have in terms of the revenue decrease, and they're getting affected the same way. I just hope that when the federal government passes on funds through the state, that the state has an interest in helping pass down those funds to municipalities as well. And I appreciate, I know you'll be part of that discussion, so I wanted to raise that issue, but I want to thank you, because I know that you'll fight for the town. So I'd just like you to keep me informed as that discussion comes up, so we're at least on top of the issue as it develops.
Yeah, absolutely. And thanks, Ron. I think, you know, it's interesting, and I say, you can't see me because my camera's not working, but I use the air quotes when I say interesting. You know, we're working and talking, starting our discussions about this budget, and I just, you know, I believe it's going to look radically different than what we expected just a short six weeks ago. Six weeks ago, we're thinking, oh, great, you know, our revenues are coming in well, we're doing good, we might be able to push more money out to local aid. And now, you know, the world comes to an end. I think it's going to look radically different. I know a lot of us, you know, believe, I think we're going to end up having to really boil this down to what is our core values here within the Commonwealth. And I know a lot of it is, for us, is to get those funds out to the local communities in that local aid so that you guys can do what you do best, right? We want to push those dollars down where they're used the most efficiently. So I can tell you that we will be advocating for that, and anything that comes from the feds will be working to push that through.
Thank you. Representative, I appreciate it. Your definition is exactly the same situation as our town. Things looked really good. We put together a budget that was, you know, while it was moderate, still conservative, at least it was moving the town forward. And we had some ideas on improving roads and doing some things, and all that has kind of come to a halt with the revenue shortfall. So we are very much like the state of Massachusetts in the same boat. So we recognize that we're kind of on the ship together, but hopefully we can find a way out that doesn't damage the citizens and helps protect the citizens. That's, I guess, our end goal here, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And like I say, I say this to you, Ron, and I say to everybody there, you know, let us know, make sure those, you know, we'll make sure from our end, and I know you guys will too, make sure that communication's coming through so that we can see what those high priorities are. Because when the ax comes out and things start getting cut, we want to make sure that we're doing what's necessary to make sure that we're keeping our services.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams, you also?
Counsel Daniel, also.
Counsel Marketti, you also?
Counsel Steve, you also?
I do have one quick question. Peter, when you're talking about the states getting involved in all this coronavirus stuff, obviously, we're seeing some serious economic issues. Do we have, is legislature looking at doing anything to get out of this by promoting more local self-sufficiency when it comes to like food supplies and some of the other things that we're starting to see in short supply now?
Yeah, very good question, Gus. You know, to be perfectly honest, yeah, I don't think we've gotten to the point yet where we're asking the questions, what do we do after this is over. But I certainly agree, not just on the state, but on the federal level in that, you know, if anything, this pandemic is highlighting just how easy it is to disrupt supply chains, how easy it is to make sure that, you know, we just heard the story the other day about a meatpacking plant in South Dakota that's going to shut down that supplies an enormous amount of meat to the country. So, you know, this pandemic is really putting us in a position where we have to seriously think about these supply chains and keeping them more local. So I think these are discussions that are going to come up and are going to be very important for us.
Is there anything specifically in the queue for bills now to help that?
No, I have not seen anything on that front as of yet. But I'm certainly more than happy to talk with you about any of your ideas. Like, we've been successful in bills that come up, of getting them modified. It's a really different process now as we kind of go through this. So I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and figure out some ideas we can come up with.
Okay.
Sorry, Counsel Dash, you also?
Thank you, also.
Okay, thank you. All right, Representative Durant, thank you for being here tonight. Look forward to, as always, working with you, and thank you for all the hard work that you do for our district and helping Southbridge and as we work through this. The one thing that I would like possibly to see, maybe some help from you, is while I believe the MCAS being canceled for the remainder of this year, I really think that some movement has to be done, that that's more than a six-month delay, given the, especially the situation that we're in as a community, the inequities of our ability for us to provide laptops and that remote access for education. So if anything you can do to maybe get that message, set up the chain to the commissioner's office and everything, we are in a receivership district, and it'll be equally hard for us to even make any strides or momentum that we started to see at the beginning of this year is pretty much halted, and we're going to have to see some regressions in that because we don't have the ability or the means to provide that remote education. So anything that you can do to get that message to the powers that be on behalf, that's my position anyway. But anything you can do on that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I think it's, again, it's one of those situations where, you know, you take for granted the fact that we're all sitting here on a computer, and we all have internet access sufficient to have a video conference, and you kind of just think, hey, well, doesn't everybody have this? So when you run into this kind of situation, you find that, gee, no, everybody doesn't have this. And it, and those and that really start to show through. So that's a good suggestion, and I'm happy to bring that up for you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, thank you, Representative Durant. We appreciate you being here tonight. We look forward to seeing you in the near future.
Thank you, guys. Again, anything you need, let me know.
Thank you. Item 9, citizen forum, pursuant to governor's order, there is no public participation for this meeting, as we do not have the capability to do a public participation at this time. Item 10, vote to transfer $10,000 from Town Council Reserve Account Number 00132.578100 to special account for COVID-19 expenses. Ballot motion?
So moved.
Counsel Katrona moved, Counsel Daniel second. So I guess I'll go on this because this was something that I had asked to maybe take a look at through the Emergency Operations Center. We do have some bills that are coming in, and granted, we are going to have the ability to get some reimbursement, but we have to have a mechanism to pay for it before we get reimbursed. So my thought was to just set aside $10,000 to be able to pay the bills, and then it's purely as an accounting measure, because the other departments have what they had already budgeted out for. So we're talking about the bombers that we had bought for the fire police and DPW, so that employees, we could have temperatures taken by the employees. That bill was a couple hundred dollars. So we're just looking for an account, it's not a blank check of any kind, it's a benefit that we needed to buy any supplies through the Emergency Operations Center. So that's what it is. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to answer a question you always ask to be prepared, that question is how much is in the reserve account? Right now, the current balance before the $10,000 is $119,000. $16.26, you know, Mr. Chairman, the reason, that normally is budgeted $100,000, but because of the Bay Path money, and your suggestion that we put that extra money from Bay Path into the reserve account, we have more than we normally do. So even setting aside the $10,000, we're in very good shape. Hopefully, if we don't have to spend much this money reserved, this could help us in the current year in terms of any potential deficits situation. That $100,000 gives us some protection if, thank God, we don't have to spend any of it through the rest of the year. But I thought you'd want to know that amount, and counselors would want to know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll go around. Counsel Dash, you have any questions? Counsel Katrona, any questions? Counsel Daniel?
I'm also.
Counsel Adams?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, and I'm sure this may be brought up later on. Right now, the town has received $18,500 for COVID bills, i.e., it could be from the nurses, paying for the nurses that are coming on board to help the town, or maybe for bombers that we received the other day. Now, is this different? Should it go right to this COVID line of accounting, or is this going to this $10,000 line of accounting from the reserve?
Again, I think when we first talked about this, the original one was we only had that first payment of, what, $6,500, I believe it was. You know, and then we had the additional monies. So I mean, truly, it's possible that we may not put anything to this account, it's just to have the ability to, if it can't go to the public health account, there's an account to pay for it. So it's just an accounting mechanism. So if it can go to Andy's Public Health account, then we'll put it against that. If at this time, it's an expense that can't go to that, it's something else we can put to, to do with reimbursement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Counsel Marketti, do you have a question?
So this money is going into an account, but there's no specifics on what it's going to be used for? It's just going to be like a fund to tap into?
It's a fund for any expenses relative to the COVID-19 pandemic supplies. So if there's supplies that we have to purchase as a town for our response, we can put the bills against that account if it can't go to Andy's Public Health. So it's strictly related to the COVID-19, then we would put those, whatever monies that we could put in for reimbursement, we would put in for reimbursement.
But we'd still be voting on it?
As far as what?
We would still be voting if something came in to use that $10,000 for, we would vote on it. We're not just going to hand that $10,000 out and spend it any way you want.
It would be, so if we had to go out and buy PPE for some reason, personal protective equipment, the fire department has to buy whatever is Tyvek suits, more N95 masks, gloves, whatever it is for this COVID-19 response, there would be that money available that they could put the bill against. So I mean, it's not a free-for-all, let's go put ceilings up in the town hall. It's let's find what specific equipment's needed for our public safety, public health agents to operate to address pandemic COVID-19.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything else to that?
No, you answered the question well, and the mic's happy with the answer. Obviously, any expenditure like that, Counsel Marketti, would have to be approved by me. So, you know, the fire chief said I wouldn't want to buy this for the COVID response, he would come to me. I would okay and go through. But right now, all those discussions, Andy's part of in that process because we're using those public health funds first. So it would only be if we couldn't use those public health funds, we would look at this. And again, I'm not worried about this funding. I'm very confident that any money we use for the virus is going to be refunded through some state mechanism. So I don't see this as a problem in terms of the town expenditure. I think it will all be reimbursed for this particular issue.
And again, it's very possible we may not even tap into it, it's just to have a line item to put an expense against. Counsel Steve, did you have any questions?
Just one quick comment, actually. I just wanted to ask, Ron, if you could, if we do end up needing to use this account line, could you just drop us an email letting us know what it's being used for?
Absolutely. And I think the chair is right, it's unlikely, frankly, we'd use it. But I would be happy to let you know if we have an expense, and I'll just shoot out a quick email.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion?
Counsel Katrona? Okay. Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Lauren F. Goldberg, Esquire of the law firm Coleman and Page, as special counsel for the town of Southbridge, provide legal services and guidance to the town of Southbridge in the town clerk's office relative to the COVID-19 pandemic impact on the upcoming elections. This is a request of Town Clerk Matty Bonadias pursuant to the standard operating procedure number 12, 1.0, authority to hire counsel. Mr. Town Manager? Is there a motion? Moved by Counsel Katrona, seconded by Counsel Adams. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is a request, as you say, by our town clerk. Coleman Page is not one of our approved attorneys, so in order for us to have them provide this service to the town clerk's office, counsel has to prove it. I'm not sure if Matty is one of these callers, caller one, caller two, so she can define a few the specific legal.
I'm here.
She can define the specific.
Matt, if you just define the specific legal question you're trying to get answered.
Good, ma'am, sorry.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. As you all know, that a lot of elections have been postponed or delayed, and there's going to be a different way of doing everything this year. They're looking to do early voting through the mail, so that we're there, and then shortening polling hours, and just so that the town doesn't get in any kind of trouble, or for guidance, for me, Lauren Goldberg is, you know, top-notch in the state of Massachusetts on elections, and I would just rather have her guiding us so that we don't foresee any problems.
Any questions, Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Is there a dollar amount or an hourly rate that we're going to be charged for this? Are we giving them an open checkbook?
No, we received a proposal from Attorney Goldberg, and she quoted us $300 an hour, which I looked into, and it's the same as Merckel Connell charges as well. hour, which I looked into and it's the same as Mark O'Connell charges as well.
Is, is there an estimate of time that you think you might be billing?
I, I don't know as of yet, I, because I don't know what's involved with what's going to be upcoming for elections, but I don't foresee it to be tons of money.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Nash, you have any questions?
No, thank you, I'm all set with this. I read through the document.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Daniel?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Council Adams? You're all set, thank you. Okay. You're at the bottom of my screen, so I can't see if you, one thumbs up, up there. Council Marquetti?
No, I don't, I don't think we need to hire a lawyer for this. I, I don't think they can predict what's going to happen. Um, first of all, second of all, I think the real, the real issue, as I said last night, the issue this year is going to be social distancing and I think, uh, we're going to have to decide if we're going to have the election at one place, at one polling place, the, uh, community center, if we're going to spread it out like we used to have in different precincts. But hiring a lawyer at this time, I just don't think, I don't think they can predict what's going to happen. And also I went to their website and it looks to me that they've got a template on there that we can use, so we don't need to hire them to do that. We could just use. The purpose is to send a letter to the governor asking him to, to delay the election. We could do that without the attorneys. Um, and also one last thing, we can delay the election till June, till June 30th, which I think is plenty of time. I just think no one can predict what's going to happen and I don't think, I'm not in favor of hiring, uh, the attorneys for this, this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve?
Um, yeah, I actually have two, two quick questions. One is, um, to Matty, do you have any specific concerns that you wanted the, the attorney to answer? Because it was kind of vague.
Right. Well, only because for early, if we do early voting by mail, we've never actually done early voting by mail for a local election. Um, how to go about and what the process is to notify all the voters so that everyone is, it's fair all around. Um, as you all know, we have to do everything both in English and in Spanish. How do, how we reach everyone and what is the legal way to do everything?
Okay. Um, and we, are you actually considering postponing the elections and/or switching to all mail vol, uh, all, yeah, all voting, voting by mail?
So the, for first question, uh, postponing? No, only because postponing, you have to have your election done by June 30th anyway. So ours is too nice, so to do it the three weeks probably would not be worth it. Um, and to do all of early voting? We can't do all early voting.
I was thinking all, all, is it, is, are you even considering the idea of doing all voting by mail? Cause I know some states do that in, anyway. Um, I don't know what the requirements are for us to do that, uh, cause that would certainly be the, I guess, the, the logical last step, avoid all of the, the, the six foot distancing and all this other stuff, so.
I, I don't know that, I don't know that we can do all early voting, but I know that there's talk of shortening the poll hours. So rather than be open for 13 hours, there's a minimum of four hours that you have to be open, but you do actually have to open up polls.
Um, I do believe that the law does allow for people to, if they're concerned about COVID-19 issues, to use that as a reason to get a mailed ballot, if I'm not mistaken. I don't remember where I, that, but.
Right. That, that would be, that would fall under the absentee ballot because the absentee ballot, you do need a reason. Early voting, you do, it's, um, no, no reason. You don't need a reason to vote early.
Right. Okay. And also, um, I guess this would be through you to either Karen or Ron. Um, would it be possible, any costs that we have that would be above, be above and beyond what we would normally pay for election costs? Could that be subject to COVID reimbursement?
Uh, you know, that, I, that, that question, truthfully, Gus, I'm not sure I can answer. I don't know. One of the things we were talking about today is employee time, but as it relates to COVID, could it be reimbursed? So I sent an email today to Paul to look at that issue, uh, because, you know, Andy's spending extraordinary time on COVID, I'm spending extraordinary time on COVID. So I think it's the whole package of things that we're going to have to talk about in terms of reimbursement. So I'd say there's a possibility, but I think we really have to get, I'm not sure there's a clear set of what's going to be reimbursed or not yet, but we're going to have to look into all of that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, um, thank you, Ben, clear.
Thank you.
I think, uh, my personal opinion is, uh, I'd never like to spend money on legal fees, uh, or legal questions and I'm sure that, um, I know just your assistance over the last six weeks, the information that you have provided to, to, uh, to me, uh, that you've gotten from Coleman and Page, that was all free information. I'm sure you would continue to get that free information and this would just be for any technical aspects of parameters on that and that, uh, you, uh, certainly would use it judiciously, so I don't have a problem in supporting this as we wade through all these, uh, all these issues. Um, Mr. Town Manager, do you have something else?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matty, if, if you and Madam Town Clerk, uh, just be very specific and draft, uh, document out the questions you want to ask them. Just, just keep your questions narrow to what you want, because if you give them a broad question, they go on and on. So just be careful as to being very specific about the information you want from them, okay?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and my last point would be is certainly if we don't seek certain legal questions and we do something wrong, uh, there's no doubt that there's people out there that would question the validity of our, uh, elections. So, uh, we want to make sure that we do it right. Okay. Council Steve's just stated that his phone just died. He's going to participate in chat, uh, like he did last night, so. All right, uh, there's no further questions or, I don't see any, uh, roll call, man secretary?
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
No.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
All right. Council Adams?
Yes.
And Council Katrona?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item 12, vote to amend Schedule 5 by adding a temporary position for the Health Department. Assistant to the public nurse with a $250 per week compensation paid for additional duties as a result of the COVID-19 virus. The position to be funded from state monies from COVID-19 assistance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Uh, Council Katrona moving. Good question, Council Adams, second. Um, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you. This is just simply the, the money for these nurses is actually going to be paid for the schools. These are employees of the school system. So my understanding, they're just setting up a stipend, uh, to be able to pay these nurses, nurses and they'll be refunded from the health position from the state. Uh, Melissa, uh, has let me know that it has to be part of Schedule 5. Um, it's part of just the, the payment process and Melissa wants a comment any further she can, but it's every, every position, anything we do, we always put it on the compensation schedule, the Schedule 5, so we know what positions there.
Um, I, uh, maybe.
Hold on, Melissa, go ahead, Melissa.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I thought this was not for the nurses, but for a, uh, town employee.
Jack, can I comment?
Uh, go ahead. Uh, Andy, Secretary Jovan?
Um, since we discussed the last meeting, we're proposing to expand the health to the public health nurse with two nurses who are actually going to be paid through the school. Um, that's why they don't, they do not have to be on this because the school is handling their payment, taking the money out of the COVID account. This is actually from, uh, for Alicia in my office. Her duties are specifically enforcement and inspections. She is now going to be doing case follow-up. Now, I know her, her job clocks out and any other duties as directed by the director. However, this is not even in line with what she does. So I'm envisioning she's going to be doing 10 to 15 hours a week in after-work hours and Saturday hours. Um, but this is actually specifically, uh, compensate her for that time. Now, there's something else in the chatter that, uh, in the bylaws, I believe, the town manager to approve overtime monies for a employee that, for a, for an exempt employee. Um, did not go that route because I want to be able to tap this COVID account money without having to worry about routing it through the town's, uh, general fund, the town. So I'm looking for the 250. It's a temporary, so the, uh, state of emergency is lifted, uh, or until the money's run out. But it is specifically for the additional duties that I'll be asking the health inspector to be doing.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just, just an apology, you're right. This is, we had numerous discussions over the nurses and over, uh, Alyssa, Alicia's position, so, uh, I apologize for the, um, confusion from me on this, but, but the, uh, Health Director's correct. We, we just had multiple discussions and, and, uh, he's correct in this, in this statement.
Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So is, are we hearing that, that there's not going to be, Alicia will not be paid overtime, just a straight 250 a week?
Correct. I base that money on what she would be getting overtime at time and a half, but Alicia is an exempt employee, so it makes it difficult to pay her overtime. However, the duties we're going to be asking her are what's expected of, so she, it warrants compensation.
You all set, Council Katrona?
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Nash, you all set? Yes. Council Dan, you have any questions?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Council Adams, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Council Marquetti?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. So Council Steve's has, first, I, I, and I'm not sure if you answered this or not, went this run into issues with overtime, but you stated this would be, uh, a stipend in addition to her duties. So hopefully that addressed his question. Uh, and Council Steve's also asked, is she legally a special employee? I'm, I'm not sure. Special employees are typically employees that work for a different, uh, as, as if you have a full-time school employee that then becomes a call firefighter, then you have to give them special employee status. Am, am I correct on that? Maybe Karen knows that answer, Melissa?
Yeah, so I, this is a stipend, which is fairly common within our, um, Schedule 5 for people who do duties outside of their normal, um, schedule of work and duties outside their, um, job description, and I thought that's where this would apply. Um, and I wanted, you know, I asked for it to be on the Schedule 5 so that we didn't just go up and make up stipends, you know, and I thought that every other stipend was on the Schedule 5 and that this would be treated like, like the stipend for the parking clerk, for instance, that we have. Um, annually, we have an amount for that, but this would be temporary, as Andy said, but, but addressed here for, for, for this special condition.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Council Steve says it makes sense. Thank you. So, all right, if there's no further discussion?
Chair, I got a question.
Council Adams, go ahead.
You asked me earlier. Thank you, Mr. Chair, just, uh, to Andy real quick, is there, or even to Melissa, will there be an, should we have an end date on this or a reevaluation date on this? Or is this just a, our bludge? Um, this can go until, you know, uh, the ball?
Can I make? It is listed as a temporary position. Our intent is to keep it a temporary position. Um, we have two controls on this. One, we run out of money, or two, the state of emergency is lifted. Um, as long as I have cases that need investigation, I will need the resources to investigate.
Yeah. You all set, Council Adams?
Well, then, I guess there's a no on that. Is that what you're saying? There's no need to put an end date to this?
There is no set end date. If we want to set an end date for review, I think we can do that. Um, but I envision the end date will be with the lift of the, uh, state of emergency for when we, when the cases die off enough that, that we can go back to just our public health nurse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Nash, did you have a question? I saw you like go green for a minute.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, roll call.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Katrona? And Council Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andy. Item 13, vote to authorize Town Manager to negotiate pricing with Risk Services Group and enter into contract for the town's electricity for up to 36 months at a low fixed rate. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Council Daniel, seconded by Council Katrona. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, many of the council's members who have been on the council for some time remember, uh, we did the same kind of thing when we just purchased natural gas. Uh, there's consulting companies, and this is a consultant company we've used in the past on a regular basis. What they do is they look at the market at any given time, uh, and, and we already did kind of a test look at the market. Right now, if we were to, well, if we had bought electricity at the day we tested the market, it would have been a small savings to the town in terms of the electricity cost. So all this does is allow me to work with him. I use, frankly, I don't know the timing of that. He would advise me as to what was the best day to buy, uh, the electricity. It's a 36 three-year contract. We're expecting it to be, if, if things continue where we're at, we're expecting it to be a slight savings over electricity costs as we pay him today. And again, once we do that, we'll lock into a three-year contract. This gives me the authorization to do that upon his advice. Sure understand the procedure, uh, with any town buying these commodities.
I'll go around with questions. Council Marquetti, any questions?
No, I'm set, thanks.
Council Adams?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Council Katrona?
All set.
Thank you. Council Nash?
Thank you. I think the Town Manager answered my question about it being the same entity that I injected to last year. Thank you.
Council Daniel?
Just, just to be clear, Council Nash, we've used him in the past. He did, he did the natural gas. We had another company that did electricity before this one and changing away for them and going to him, uh, but he's a regular that does this for the town, okay?
Council Nash? Council Daniel?
All set, thank you.
Council Steve's, any questions? He's all set. Do you know any further questions? Roll call.
Council Marquetti? Council Nash?
No.
Council Steve?
He said yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
And Council Jovan?
Yes.
Item 14, vote to ratify the letter of engagement for the services of Community Paradigm Associates LLC as recommended by the Town Manager Search Committee in the amount of $11,000, plus any reimbursement costs associated with advertising and any unusual printing and copying. And authorized Town Manager and Grand San Angel to sign the agreement for said services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I think I have a, Council Katrona, move the question. Council Adams, seconded. Council Daniel, I'll, I'll refer this to you. I don't mention it in the opening, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, the Search Committee is very impressed with the credentials of this, uh, this company, very impressed with the people that, uh, would be working with us. There's three people, uh, total. There's a head contact, the head principal, and two subordinates. We're pleased with the proposal that came in. It was a 10-chapter proposal, very well done, very professional. We think that after speaking with Mr. Lynch, who is the principal of the company, that we'll have a good relationship, and he seems to understand what it is that we're looking for as a community, just generally speaking. He understands our needs. He mentioned that he's worked with other communities of a similar nature. We think that they're a good fit for us and that we're a good fit for them.
Thank you. I look for discussion. Counsel Daniel, you have anything else you want to add? Are you good? You're good. Counsel Daniel, you're good?
Yes, I'm all set.
Counsel Katrona?
I'm all set, thanks.
And Counsel Adams?
Nothing, thank you.
Counsel Nash? Camera's off, so. Okay. Counsel Marquetti?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Steve weighed in and said that he was familiar with Mr. Lynch as he was involved in our towns forum years ago when we were debating to revert to the Board of Selectment Town Management System and stated that he's very knowledgeable. And I do remember him now because I remember having a conversation with him. Thank you, Counsel Steve, for that. Counsel Nash, you have any comments?
No, all set. What else?
All right. See anything further? Roll call.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steve? He said yes. Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Daniel, we look forward to working with you and setting up a meeting so that we can meet Mr. Lynch as a counsel as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15, discussing Section 10 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, an act to address challenges faced by municipalities and state authorities resulting from COVID-19, a local option to extend the due dates of property tax bills under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 57, and 57(c), from May 1, 2020, to a date no later than June 1, 2020, and to take any action on same. So I didn't have a motion yet here because this was really brought up by Melissa and the town manager to have a discussion, but by adding to take any action there too, we can enter in a motion as such. So that's why this is worded this way. So I'll go to Town Manager first.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we didn't bring forward a recommendation on this because this is a tough issue that, you know, it helps local citizens by delaying the time they have to pay taxes. And we all know there's a lot of layoffs, there's a lot of concerns with citizens. So it really is a benefit to citizens. At the same time, it causes more of a deficit in the current budget year for the town. So it is a difficult question indeed. I'll let Melissa explain the details of it, but this is what Representative Durant was talking about. You know, it's a real trade-off here. Either way, over the long term is a little bit, because it's, the towns are going to collect taxes. In the short term, there's going to be some negative ramifications towards citizens, but it also benefits citizens. So we wanted to bring this before you for your decision. I think you can go either way. I think citizens in general would like you to do this because it gives them more time. And I'll let Melissa give a little bit more detail as to the financial impact on the town. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Melissa?
So yeah, this is just one of several options provided in the most recent bulletin regarding COVID-19, and it's an option to postpone the tax bills by, the tax bills' due date by one month, which of course would then negate any late fees or interest from, between June, I mean, between May 1 and June 1, because the bill, the bill due date will have changed. It gives people an extra, you know, 30 days to pay their bill. Is that enough time? I don't know. But it is, you know, it is an option to provide the taxpayers of South Bridge some relief. Doesn't however relieve them of the tax bill, and then the next tax bill is not also going to be delayed 30 days, so it makes the time period between the due date of June 1 and the due date of August 1 closer. So I don't know, personal finances, that's the, but the individual would be able to decide that. I've watched, because we're a little late on this, other communities and how they've done it, and so I just thought I would share those options with you and you could decide. There's another section of the bulletin which allows for interest and penalties to be waived up until June 30, but that is on all bills dated after May 10, I mean, not March 10. We're sort of in an awkward position in the sense that we had one bill that was due March 13, and we were open and fully operational on the 13th. And so we have, we collected most of that and then would, and have been collecting interest on anyone who's paid over the last month or so while we've been closed. But the language to delay penalty and interest to June 30 says any bill dated after, I mean, March 10. A lot of dates, I'm sorry, I'm struggling with this. So I've seen communities take the action to delay the tax bill and then delay all penalties and interest, meaning that if you delay the tax bill to June 1 and then also delay all penalties and interest to June 30, any bill paid on July 5, the interest would go back to June 1 because the due date cannot be any later than June 1. I've seen some communities delay only the penalties and interest to June 30, and then any bill July 5, interest would go all the way back to May. And then, yeah, so I guess it's really only two options. Or I guess you could just delay penalties, yeah, you could just delay penalties and interest. So it's just really only those two options. Or you could just do what we've proposed here, which is change the due date to June 30 and that be the accommodation that you're making the taxpayer. But just because I've watched a couple of communities and what they've done, I thought I would share with all of you so that you could decide what you thought was best for the community.
So I'll go around for questions. I'll go, Counsel Adams?
Just a quick question. This is from Melissa, the Ms. Chair. You said June 30, is that June 1 or June 30? I'm sorry. I heard June 30.
The due date can be no later than June 1. Penalties and interest can be waived up to June 30 for any bill with a due date after March 10.
Okay. The process, thank you. Yeah. Okay. Counsel Katrona, you have a question?
Counsel Daniels just asked the same question I was going to ask. Let me just, one more. So if we make a motion tonight to postpone taxes to June 1, that gives, this gives the residents the opportunity to pay up to June 30, penalties and interest? Just waived?
No, sir. So if we postpone the bill until June 1, that's the new due date, June 1, as opposed to May 1, which is this due date for quarter four tax bills. But this should just change the due date. We're going to give everybody 30 days. They can pay. They're not even late. We're not waiving anything. We're changing the due date. That's option one. Two is to not change the due date, leave the due date exactly what it is, which is May 1, vote to waive penalties and interest up until June 30, but where the bill would still be late, but we wouldn't charge them any penalties, so kind of who cares? But if they paid it in July, let's say, then the interest would go all the way back to the due date. So then option three would be to change the due date to June 1 and change that no penalties and interest can be paid to June 30. And then, you know, if someone wished to pay in July, the interest only goes back to June 1. So these are the three options that I've seen other communities take, so I just wanted to lay them all out there. I should also say that collecting everything the last state of fiscal year, a little terrifying to me.
Counsel Steve, Melissa, you did say last night, we're allowing delays by not sending out demand notices or charging interest, but I think it was just the demand notices, right?
Right, so we're not charging fees.
They're still charging interest.
We're still charging interest, but we have not been charging fees because we are not sending demands or doing shut-offs and everything.
Right. Okay. So he believes we should waive interest given how tight many people's finances are now, and he stated he support option three. So that's his point. Counsel Nash, do you have anything, questions?
I don't think I have any questions. I know that we've heard what all these options are, but I'd be in favor of maintaining the current due date of May 1, waiving the penalties and interest through July 1.
Okay. Counsel Daniel?
I agree with Counsel Nash. I believe in keeping the due date the same, but waiving the fees until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Counsel Marquetti?
I'm happy to support any of those options. I think we should give the residents a break. Thank you.
All right. So Melissa, so we get kind of a sense that the option would be to maintain the date to May 1, due date, but waive any interest and penalties to June 30. And that is an option?
I am sending you from the bulletin, the language that says, what it says about the, in the text, can you see that there?
I can.
And so that's the, excuse me, I'm going to have to plug my computer in, apparently.
I got it, yeah.
So the, so that's the, that's the part that would waive interest and penalties up to that date, and it's, a friend of mine told me today that her select board voted this option. They waived all the penalties and interest, but chose not to change the due date.
Okay. And I think that's a sense that we got from a few councils here. Okay.
So should we amend that?
Well, we just have to make a motion, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we, any motions made? Just maybe based on what Melissa's seen or maybe other councils have seen who have that is there to do, have we seen an increase in, or somebody have a conversation about increase in forbearances for, you know, some banks will work with a mortgage company, or the mortgage company will work with homeowners, and they'll delay, let's just say, May 1, June 1, July 1 payments, and it'll just add to the tail end of their original contract. Have we seen an increase in that? Has anybody talked about that at all? Because that's one of the options that are out there for many banks at this point.
So, oh, I have to.
Start it out.
I'm not sure if I understand the question. Do you mean that, you don't mean where the banks are allowing for homeowners to delay their payment and that might, how that might affect our collections because they're collecting escrow? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah. Since they're collecting escrow, is that any type of concern of yours at all? Or is it, I mean, I was trying to get, what is happening?
Well, I did get an inquiry, you know, from one of the tax collection services to ask if we were delaying the bills because, and they asked that question, I'm pretty sure because they're going to hold on to the millions of dollars that they, I'm pacing in another section here, just so that we have all the pieces, because they intend to pay late so that they can sit on the millions of dollars to all the towns and communities who do this extension. So I think that if we had extended the due date as one of the options, I think that they absolutely would pay later because that's why they're asking the question. That being said, you know, my response has been to everyone who's asked the question, we, we as a community have not made any of that decision yet. As soon as we know more, we'll let you know. And our biggest, I'm glad to say that our biggest escrow payment came in today from our biggest group, so it did make me happy. I was like, oh, I'm wrong. It's not going to be as bad as I think. So we'll see if that continues.
All right, thank you. Melissa, appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm reading the two drafts that, or sections that Melissa sent us. I just want to be sure I understand. The first one seems to be very broad. I understand, but let me ask my question. So the first one, it says this section allows waiver of interest and penalties regarding late payments of bills. So to me, that implies any of the bills collected by the Treasury Collector's Office. The second one, to me, is a little bit more narrowly drawn because it says, includes actual wave interest and penalty on late payment of any excise tax amendment, assessment or portion of whatever. Doesn't say anything about regular property taxes. So I think, first of all, we wouldn't vote on the item 15 as just drafted. We would have to vote on, I think, the wording of one of these two. But am I correct in saying that the first one you gave me at 8:41 PM is the broader language as to the waiver of penalties and interest because it says bills, it doesn't define the bills like the second one does?
So that's a part of a whole section that I placed it out of order, but it is all bills. And the concerning part for me is that, like I said, we have one bill that was due on the 13th that we've been collecting interest on. But I, I mean, I guess we could say we wouldn't going forward, and the due date was the due date, and until such action was taken, interest was due.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, so just because I'm trying to be clear here, to me, the first one you sent is broader because I know when you don't add language into legislation of bills like this, it doesn't include it. And since the second one doesn't include property tax, to me, it seems that the vote, the appropriate vote would be on the first one that was sent, but I'm not positive, so I guess I'm looking for, Melissa.
This is the whole section.
You want it with the motion to include both things? The first one including anything?
It's just the section about delaying the taxes. Those are the same section. I just, this is the whole C option to waive interest. These are, this is the whole group of that for Section 11.
So I guess I'm trying to understand what the vote would be. What would the motion be? Do vote for both of these? Have the chair read both of these and have a vote on both of these? Or one or the other? How do you perceive this to be voted on?
So one, this is Section C, which is the option to waive interest and payments made after the due date, which is Section 11 of the law previously stated, and that it applies to all bills with a due date after March 10, making that there would be no interest or penalties respect to that date. And it does go on to continue to say that we wouldn't do shut-offs or any other penalties, which we've already sort of informally agreed not to do. But it's the, it's section, Section 11 is the section of the law. That paragraph below it, which is the first paragraph I gave you, just explains that it is all bills.
Okay, so the three, so the first one is just the second section, it's part of Section 11, it's just after Section 11. So it's the same, same section, it just goes farther. So when it would be read, when it would be read, it would be the second one first and then the first one, but the vote would be on both of those. So the chair would then read both of these? Is that, that's what I'm trying to get at? Seems to me the answer to that is yes, but.
I think I put it up on the screen.
This is the actual Section 11.
Does everybody see Section 11?
Yes, thank you. So pursuant to Section 11, we could make a motion.
Yes.
Right? That's what you're looking for, pursuant to Section 11, right?
Yeah.
Do you know what Section 11 of what chapter?
It's the same one that we have on the agenda.
Chapter 53. Okay, so on Section 10, we're going to adopt Section 11.
Right.
Okay. Correct, Melissa, that's what we're looking at. Correct, Melissa, that's what we're looking at. So instead of section 10, what are you looking at doing at section 11?
Right.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Everybody good with that screen?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Nice thing about remote participation, when you can share stuff like that. All right. So it would just be, and so the simple motion would be vote to accept section 11 of chapter 53, correct, Melissa? Still there? She muted.
Muted myself, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So just, vote to accept, instead of, so we're going to vote to accept section 11 of chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020.
Instead of section 10. So if you use the same vote that you have drafted with just changing the section to accomplish what, which you all think is best, then.
Yeah, I think that works.
Except, Chairman? Yes. Mr. Chairman, I think though that you would want to leave off the last line because we're not extending it to June. So I think that last part of it, you'd probably leave off.
No, yeah, instead, yeah, instead of.
From the May to June part. Mr. Chairman, you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at this first.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question to Melissa?
Go ahead. Absolutely, Karen.
Melissa, does it, you had mentioned about this March 10 date, and that the excise, I believe, was due on March 13. Is that correct? Is that going to cause a problem at this point? I just want to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where we have to do refunds. I honestly don't know. My interpretation is that we collected interest up until the point that this was, this had not been decided.
I would, yeah. I would agree with Melissa, and I think we would, we could simply add on to this for any bills not paid as of April 16, 2020. Right?
I don't see why.
So I think it's going to be, I'm sorry, section 10 of chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, and the Acts of 2020 is faced by the state authorities resulting from COVID-19. A local option to waive, right?
Yep.
Local option to waive. What is it?
Interest and penalties.
Interest and penalties, right? And penalties, right? With a due date, with interest on, on, all outstanding, right?
Yep.
Bills due on or after March 10. How's that sound?
Yep. Extending it only June 30, though.
Right. But, all right. Made after its respective due date, right? But not before June 30, right?
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense, Melissa?
Yep.
Okay. Give me one second here. Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I apologize because I'm trying to think this through as it's being discussed. So I guess I'm still trying to understand Karen's question. So if somebody has already paid an interest or penalty after March 10, do we have to refund them after we pass this? That's my, I think that's what Karen's question is. I'm not sure I've heard the answer to that.
The answer was waive interest and penalties on all outstanding bills which were due on before March 10.
So the question, Mr. Chairman, what if somebody's already paid that interest? That's my question. I think that's what Karen's question is. If the citizen already paid that interest and penalty, do we have to refund them? But I think that's Karen's question, am I correct?
It is Karen's question, and my non-lawyer interpretation is that interest and penalties were due up until it was decided. And it also, I believe, says May.
So the question to you, Melissa, is do you think you have to reimburse anybody once this passes?
No.
Okay. So that I wanted to hear, I just wasn't sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Melissa, after you say that, we may not even have to put, on outstanding bills, do we? Because it says you may.
Right.
But they've already been paid. Do we have to do this tonight, or can we bring it back, our next meeting, Melissa?
Makes no difference to me. You bring it back in next meeting, we'll get more money in.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I want to make sure we have a tight motion. We look through this before we put this forward. So I think we all have the same intent, but I think we need to maybe take a look at it closely. Is anybody opposed to that? Bring it back?
Good move. Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we just really have to take a look at it and make sure that we don't open a Pandora's box of refunds. I'm also giving the citizens a break on that, but I don't want to get into having to reimburse, you know, somebody had the means to pay it and all that. So, all right. Council McKee? Did you have a question?
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right. All right, let me see if it helps us. Okay. All right, we'll, without opposition, we'll just hold this and we'll have Melissa and Karen and town manager take a look at that and work our way through that, make sure we have a good solid agenda item for the next meeting. And maybe, perhaps we may have a special town council meeting within here if anything comes up for COVID updates or anything like that, we can always put it out on a special town council meeting. I prefer to do that. Without opposition, we'll hold on that.
Mr. Chairman, I completely agree with you. I think we do need to look, I don't want to make a mistake here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And if any citizens call, we can simply say we are looking at it, we're exploring our options, and we'll do the best we can for the citizens. Okay, everybody good with that? All right. Good. Very good. All right. 16, let's discuss or review the scheduled dates activities for the presentation of departmental and subcommittee level FY 2021 budget items. Originally, I had hoped to talk about this Monday. I really don't have to talk about it further because the original, my thought process on that was originally, we had talked about doing everything at a council level and not doing a subcommittee level. Then as we thought about it, I appreciated that Council Daniel had put together the schedule, which we adhered to the schedule. I just thought we should, given the fact that we do have the ability to do remote participation, we do have citizens' members, it was important that we at least bring them into the fold and try to do as much normal activity as we can with recommendations. And I think last night's activity was a good activity. So I don't have anything further to say on that unless anybody has any questions on the budget process at all.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. The letter that went out to our councilors, Yvonne was working on it today, and I think it went out to all assistant members of the various committees. So that was taken care of today.
Thank you. Anybody else, Kuntz and Contron, do you have anything to add on that?
Nope.
Council Daniel, you all set? Council Nash, you all set?
I just want to verify that our capital budget, as it applies to the charter, I thought that the deadline was May 30, so we'll be good with May 11, right?
Yes, we have, we have to have a public hearing by the end of the 11th month, right?
So we have a debate.
Yeah, so we'll do the public, and we'll make sure we, we got to work our way through how we're going to do that public hearing. I'm sure there's going to be a way to be able to do that because planning board has been able to do a public hearing. So we'll figure that out, but we will make sure that we're able to do that by May. We can already set a public hearing date now. We can set that now. Ron can work with Yvonne to set a date for the public hearing, and we can actually publicize it and then go from there. Okay, Council? All right, thank you. Council Adams, you all set?
All set, thank you.
Council McKee, you all set?
I'm good, thanks.
And I don't see anything from Gus. Okay, so we'll hold on that. Item 17, and we do have Keith here online. Thanks, Keith, for hanging in there. This was an item brought up. Council McKee had some questions about an issue relative to the payment of veterans' benefits in view, any options available to assist, providing additional assistance to veterans. So we wanted a discussion on a council level. And Mr. Town Manager, if you have some input on this first, brief overview of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to be specific. I've had a lot of conversations with Keith about this and with the tax collector's office on this too. So I'm comfortable with the way it's being handled by Keith. I just want to note that we shouldn't speak specifically about the individual as part of this discussion. Keith is going to tell you that this person is now getting benefits, that he's worked with them, and the person is getting benefits. And I know Council McKee had mentioned about using town funds without following the state process, and I don't think that is a reasonable way to, like, a reasonable way to go is to have the particular client or veteran work through the normal state process and get the benefits reported to him. And Keith is, Meyer's saying Keith has done an outstanding job and has been helping the veteran meet all the state requirements, but I'll let Keith speak more to that.
All right. And before I go to Keith, originally, when this was brought to my attention, asked to put on the agenda, I was under the assumption that there was a number of veterans that were not getting benefits. That's the way it was processed at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, that veterans in the town were not getting their benefits and were not getting assistance from Boston. So Keith, if you could just give us up to speed as to are there veterans not getting benefits? Any veterans that have come to you? How is that working with you and welcome you into the new role?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on board since the 17th of March, and I would say about a week after that, through the learning process, after shadowing the last veteran service officer, we submitted pay for nine of 11 veterans on board with us here in Southbridge. We had two that had some issues that needed to be worked through, one of which is the subject of what brought this about. Since that time, which I actually was shadowing Mike even prior to that, I had spoken to the individual before I even became the existing veteran service officer. And I've been working with them ever since. But just to go back to, all the way to March 17. So nine of 11 were submitted for pay and were paid. I believe I put that in my report as well. Nine of those 11 were put in for pay and were submitted benefit checks. Now, just today, we have now 12 veterans, and 10 of them have been submitted for pay as of today, and only two of which are outstanding, which is, they're not really outstanding. We have one that is just pending a social security, Medicare buy-in program, and it's like $144 that the veteran services department pays, and we're going to alleviate that by the buy-in process. So the veterans, the whole system, as far as I can tell, and as best as I've been doing, I think, the best that I can, is rolling right along. In fact, I think it's moving a lot better than I had anticipated as far as my ability to do so. I've made some huge strides with the communication process with the authorizers in Boston, I have with the ongoing communication with the veterans that are in that limbo stage or that standstill stage. To include this particular one, I'd gotten authorized two days ago and handed him a check on the same day that he was authorized. And we're moving forward. He didn't get the full check because he wasn't authorized for both of his benefits that he was typically authorized or qualified or eligible for. However, we're working towards that second stage to bring it back. And he brought me what he needed to bring me today, and I submitted it. And moving forward, I believe we are going to end up with everybody up to speed and everybody getting paid, not just the nine of 11 or the 10 of 12. But you all, I think, and I'm speaking as an individual, very green, I think we're always going to have one or two that are going to be in that stage. And it's my job, and I, I think that it's going to be an ongoing, I don't want to say a battle, but a challenge. It's all about communication, and it's all about getting the message across and working with individuals. And I, I have no problem doing that. And I believe to include with the veteran that had had a problem, because the instance was all the way back to January, we pretty much carried it in a matter of two weeks, at least three quarters of it, and we're working to get the other 25% for the veteran handled. And I think we're in the process of doing so.
Thank you, Keith. Council McKee, you brought this up. Do you have any questions, comments?
Well, I'd just like to thank the veteran for the work that he did. The person that reached out to me and said that he's very pleased with what the veteran agent has been doing. As far as what the town manager said, all I was asking that is if Boston okay's the benefits, some of these veterans have to wait still another 30 to 60 days to get the money. And all I was asking is that if we know they're going to get the money, that we go ahead and release our portion of it. I think I've been pretty fair and pretty liberal with everything else that's going on in town, especially during this COVID-19 emergency. So all I'm asking is that you release the funds if we are guaranteed they're going to get the money, so they don't have to wait 30 to 60 days to get it. But I have no complaints with the veterans. They've got a really excellent job, and I wanted to thank him for taking care of it. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess my question of the veteran agent is I'm not aware of a 30 or 60-day period from when the paperwork put in. Is Council McKee right that when the paperwork is filed, there's a 30 or 60 delay before the individual receives benefits?
Okay, sir. Absolutely not. Again, I've only been on board since the 17th of March. The time period, the only waiting period, to be honest with you, is would be how long it takes me to log into the department, the governing body's system, which is, they call business, and see that they've authorized an approval. And once they do that, which I've been on top of, I log in, if I don't log in 100 times a day, I don't log in once. And I'm just waiting. I'm sending emails, and I'm getting responses. So as soon as I see an authorization, I am printing what I need to print, and I am immediately logging into our munis system to cut somebody a check if they are behind. In other words, an individual such as what we're speaking of and as others, I will immediately go in there. Now, the only waiting period, the process from the time I submit it in munis and the time we, as a town, cut our checks. And that process is not a function of mine when it comes to controlling. And that's not a huge, that's not a long process. It tops, from what I've seen so far. And again, it will have been there a couple, two or three weeks. A week? And if I make a call, which I don't want to keep poking somebody because I don't, I'm still learning the process and the normal ways of how things operate, I could probably get it done immediately. So it's all about the authorization at the end of the day. And the authorization, what needs to be understood, from my understanding at this point, if we don't, if we, if we cut checks that aren't authorized, the town is liable for that whole payment. They're not going to get the 75% refund at the end of the year from the state for the benefits that they deliver to the, to our veterans. And that's the only thing that I don't want to get, because it's twofold. It's there to protect the veteran, and it's also there to protect the town. And with that being said, if we do that, then I put the veteran, if I start cutting checks that aren't authorized, I put the veteran that could be in a refund status, and then I'm taking money away from them. And that's not good. And that's not good either. And then at the end of a month or a quarter or a year, then I'm also having to answer possibly to the town as to why we were cutting checks with an individual that wasn't authorized. So then that might mess up. What I'm learning is the budgets that drive all these things. So I'm under the understanding that only if they're authorized, when from the time they're authorized, I immediately put it in for payment. And now, it's, there's no extra, as far as I know, emergency fund or a fund where I can just cut a check to someone that says they're in dire need. Now, I would love to see something, if a veteran came to me, a new veteran came to me and said they're in a dire strait and they needed something, I wish there was something I could do. I'm still learning whether or not there is something that I can figure out that we can do as a community, but there's a lot of outreach things that I'm going to get into in time to come. But when there's a veteran that knows that they are delinquent in some sort of qualification for months, that's not something I think we can just go ahead and write a check when they're for months not providing the documentation to get authorized. That's the only thing I'll speak to that. Outside of, again, reiterate the fact that if I do that, the town doesn't look at me and say, okay, did you do this, 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 cross this T or dot that I? They cut the check, and I give it to the veteran. But that could do one of two things. Put the veteran in a refund status where I have to take money from them or ask them for the money back, or the town doesn't get the seventy-five percent, which they know is a refundable amount at the end of the year.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Town Manager?
To Counselor McKee, and frankly, to all the councils, if you have a particular veteran who comes to you with a problem, is this, frankly, that's why I asked a question. I've never heard of a veteran waiting months for benefits. But if you do have a veteran, obviously, all of us, all of us wanna make sure we take care of the veterans in a timely and responsible manner. So Counselor McKee, if you ever get something like that, please get ahold of me, and I'll immediately have Keith work with that specific veteran and take care of the problem. So I appreciate your concern for that veteran. I appreciate you bringing it forward, and I would say the same to all councils. You know, all of us here want veterans taken care of, so please come to me as quickly as you identify that, and I will see to it that we're working through with the veteran agent.
Thank you.
I did, and you did. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna say for the record, Counselor McKee, you did copy me on that, and I did for it right to Town Manager. I'd like to thank Town Manager and Keith for the immediate response to the questions. So I have no problem with bringing the questions forward, we just need to understand what the scope of the problem is, and whatever we can do as a town, I think we do the best for all taxpayers and all individuals, veterans, town employees, and our citizens, but we also do have to do it in the parameters of what national law, federal laws govern us. So as long as we can do something in a correct manner, I have no problem pushing that envelope, but we do have responsibilities. We swore to take an oath, just like everybody else, to follow the laws of the Commonwealth, so we just need to do everything within the law. But whatever we can do, we're out here, that's our job to do that. Counselor Adams, did you have something?
I did, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did ask Karen about, you know, just write checks, because supposedly Boston was shut down and not able to provide checks to these veterans who are, that supposedly were not receiving anything. Karen, did you get any information on that?
Counselor, can you repeat that again, what you would ask Keith?
Yeah, I asked you earlier to take a look at, if you have had some time to take a look at, are we authorized just to write a check through the veteran's system? Are we just allowed to actually, just as a town council, write a check or vote on it to write a check to a certain veteran or other individual in town?
Right, as far as I know, the account is just set up to deal with the state program, you know, through Keith, and that's how it's run.
All right, thank you, Karen. I guess my only concern as a veteran myself here and dealing with veterans on a daily basis is the fact that we, there are requirements that everybody, from not-for-profits to for-profit organizations, that we have to follow. I know for a fact, Keith, who's in, and Mike, has worked diligently with the veterans to get their benefits, and there has been, from my understanding, no shutdown of Boston or any checks that have gone out, period. I checked myself personally, and I have not heard from anybody else that said that they got delayed because Boston was shut down. Now, as the, as a veteran myself, I deal with veterans every single day, and we have actually driven veterans down to the VA hospital or the clinic in Worcester, all the way to Roxbury, to help these individuals out. And there are processes we have to take in order for these guys, the gals, to get the benefits that they rightly deserve. If we don't follow those guidelines, then it goes all out of whack, and it gets, the funds and the benefits get abused. So all I'm gonna ask is if there's anybody that's out there that is a veteran, that they feel that they need a little bit of help, we are here to help. You can go through the VFW Post, you can go through the Southbridge Veterans Council, you can go through Keith, we're all here. And to be honest with you, the Veteran Service Officer is your first stop, period. He is gonna provide you all the requirements you need and give you a checklist of things that you have to do to provide those type of benefits or at least get your name on the list. So at this point in time, as, it just, I guess it was a little frustrating to hear all this and come to find out that maybe some requirements were not being met, and I think we need to do a better job as leaders of this community to pass that information on to other individuals throughout the community in order to make sure that we're following the guidelines and that we go out there and we do our best to provide these benefits and these resources for everybody, but not just to be able to write blank checks to individuals who are not failing, or who are failing to provide the proper requirements needed. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. I'll just go around. Counselor Nash, do you have anything to add on this? You good? Counselor Daniel, you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Catriona, you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Counselor Steve swaying in. Counselor McKee, you all set with all the information you have provided?
Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, thank you again. I had no idea who it was when Counselor McKee had sent the email, but I did have an opportunity. The individual had run into me at a local supermarket and stated that he was very grateful, and this was maybe a week and a half ago, before you even got through all the information that you provided tonight, was very grateful for the assistance that you had given to him and was pleased with the fact that you were trying to work a way, a ways around for him to get his benefits. So thank you all for that hard work, and thank you for being here in Southbridge. We look forward to working with you throughout the year. So if there's anything further from Keith, thank you, Keith, for being here tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on. Eighteen old business stats in Section six dash two zero zero, keeping a pet's bylaw. That's just a old business I'm keeping on the agenda until at such time. I'm hesitant to do a reading over this platform, so we'll continue. It's not a pressing bylaw review, so at such time, we can have an actual meeting with the public in place. I think we'll hold on this item. Counselors Forum. Counselor McKee, let's start with you.
I'd just like to know if there's been any more discussion or information about getting the CDBG grant money for local businesses? I know that the flight school was, had some problems up there, and it seems to me this would be a great opportunity to get them some funds. There was something that came in the news about more CDBG grant money coming our way for use during this emergency, and I thought, well, this would be a golden opportunity. Not only would it help the flight school, it would help the town too, so they wouldn't have to waive the rent up there, and they could use the money anyway. And also, the email that we got, I think, today about local restaurants having problems, and I thought, well, these are two great opportunities right here. So just wanted to know if there was any more information on that from the town manager through the chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKee. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Counselor McKee, from the minute that issue came about, I talked to our Economic Development Director about it. She's been looking into the extra money you're talking about that might go into CDBG. They have not defined who's gonna get that extra money yet. She is on top of it. She's also reaching out to all the businesses in town. She actually sent out a survey to everybody, asking them the kind of impacts that the coronavirus is having on their particular business. You're right, if you've been watching on television, through the federal legislation, I think it's the CARES Act, they're doing everything in their power to give loans through the federal government to help these small businesses. So that is occurring, and the money is starting through the pipeline. As you might have seen, they've actually ran out of money already for businesses, so there's a lot of pressure for another piece of legislation to add more money to help small businesses. So there's a huge effort on the national level for that. In terms of our local flight school and the restaurant, both have expressed concerns about, hey, rent for facilities they can't use. I initially sent, you know, I sent a letter from the flight school, and I forwarded that to Chairman Joe Van, but I reached out to Rick Clemens, the Chairman of the Airport Commission, because really, those issues are properly first before the Airport Commission. So Counselor, I'm sorry, Airport Chairman Clemens is going to call a special meeting, a remote meeting of the Airport Commission, to work through those two issues, both for the restaurant and for the flight school. And, you know, later on, if it gets to us, I'll give you my comment. I actually called the owner of the flight school and had a long discussion with them about it. He loves being at the airport, he wants to stay there, he's looking to potentially renew the lease up there, but obviously, he's concerned about how his business is gonna be over the long term. He thinks if it's short-term, he can deal with it, but if this keeps going too long, it could, like you say, put him out of business and stuff. So he is looking to, frankly, the whole conversation was about how happy he was up there, and he wants to continue, and he just wants to work with us because of the fact that, obviously, he can't make any money up there right now. Even when he starts, it's gonna be slow build-up process again, you know? So his first month or two is gonna be a struggle. So I'm confident that both the Airport Commission and this board will be receptive to those discussions. I just let you know, they are first happening, the Airport Commission will be coming to us, so.
Thank you. You all set, Counselor McKee?
I'm set, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interesting meeting once again tonight, and I appreciate the quick response to the Economic Development Director and Town Manager with my questions today. Trying to get a real big-picture view of what's going on in our community beyond what you hear and see day in and day out. I do look at those in Town Hall to be reputable and reliable. When we ask questions, we get the information we're requesting, so thanks again for that. Point back to something you guys have all heard me say, members of the community as well. Chairman tonight referenced during Item fifteen, how nice it was to have remote participation, to be able to put something on the screen. I'm done asking for it. We have nothing but time to get a policy enacted and adopted in this community for remote participation that makes sense and to attract good people to stay and get involved. So hopefully, the next council will do something. And I'll leave by saying that I appreciate that budget season's here. I know we have a lot of work. I know that DPW's on Tuesday night. Looking forward to that and other meetings going forward. What's more, thank you all for the hard work and the diligence, and lots of good luck going forward. That's all, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. Just so you know, we did have a conversation about remote participation last night during the general government budget hearing for monies that were being set aside for remote participation. So it is, it is being worked on and continued at the forefront council, okay? Thank you for bringing that up, appreciate it. Counselor Catriona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I believe I still see the DPW Director online. I wanna thank her and her staff for the storm cleanup afterwards, and if we can just get a quick update on the Dresser Hill Road water runoff project that's been going on from her, quickly? I have residents here that are calling and asking.
Okay. I guess to me, the town manager, is that okay for Heather to respond?
Yeah, go directly through Heather on it, because I wasn't prepared for that question , not knowing it was coming. I think Heather will know of the, I hope Heather knows of the thought program.
Okay. Heather?
So, Counsel, through Mr. Joe Van, thank you. I was up there actually on Monday during the rain event and was able to witness firsthand some of the conditions that are occurring up there. I am working to document those conditions with Eric. Eric, again, is reaching out to them. We will be looking at different options for additional enforcement action on them, but I can tell you that the conditions, as I suspected, were quite poor. I would describe it as a river of mud coming down the hill in multiple locations. I don't have a answer on how we're going to, how they are going to solve the problem, but it really is their problem, and it is our job to tell them that we need to have the problem solved and pressure them to do additional work up there and controlling the sediment that is running off of their site. So we are aware of it, and I will be working with Eric, and Matt is looking into different options through the EPA and the construction permit guidelines through them of what we can do there.
Thank you, Heather. I appreciate the update. I know I received the text tonight about eight thirty-three, so I apologize for catching you off-guard, but I was looking for some type of an update, and I certainly appreciate that. So with that being said, the remote participation, I think, is wonderful, and thanks to everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you. Did you have something, Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Counselor Catriona. We had a lot of discussion about that water runoff, and, you know, I've had our building people up there numerous times, and again, I thought that problem was resolved. I know a lot of work was done to resolve that issue. I appreciate you letting me know and continue to let me know as that goes on, and I'll send the people up there. It's not really Heather's world, or it's more, you know, Eric and the Building Inspector's Office to deal with it. So please just keep me informed as you have those problems, so I can deal with them as quickly as possible, but you've been great in trying to protect the residents up there, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Steve, if you're out there, if you have anything? I don't see anything chatted. Counselor Adams?
Counselor Steve has?
Wait. Yes.
I think Counselor Steve did have something.
Go ahead, Counselor Adams.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two things for this evening. You had brought up earlier about the school feeding. That was mentioned today in the EOC brief, and it's also on our public information page about extra food being given out tomorrow because Monday is Patriot's Day, so it's out there. Those residents who are receiving that or going to get that food, it's from eleven to one, and I believe in five different locations, but those are posted on the public information page on the EOC information page. Last thing is Rosemary had sent me an email, and I'll just read it off real quick to you. It's a, since we were talking about the COVID virus a little bit this evening, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation just announced a new grant program, and to qualify, you must employ between three to twenty people, be located in an economically vulnerable community, which Southbridge qualifies, have been harmed financially by the pandemic. But you need to, you'll have to act fast. A short application will go live on April twentieth, twenty twenty, at twelve P.M. on the webpage below. You can go there now to sign up, and that webpage is www.savesmallbusiness.com. I will post that on my social media page, and it is already set to be put on the public information page, the EOC, tomorrow. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. So I do see, I'm not sure what happened with my chat, before it was scrolling down, as new messages popped up, but it didn't scroll, so I do see his chats right now. I would have to say, Counselor Steve, you really have to, to participate in chat, very I would have to say, Councilor Steve, you really have to, to participate in chat, very difficult. So whatever we can do to get you a laptop or a good phone, or get yourself a good phone so that you can participate in these meetings. I envision, I don't think that the governor's probably going to lift this order until at least the end of May, so we have a lot of meetings, so whatever we can do to, or whatever you can do to make sure you can participate fully in this, that would be great, because I certainly want to benefit by your participation in this and don't want you to miss out. It's tough enough to concentrate on all the screens with chat. So I know you do have a question here on chat, and what I'll do is, I think Town Manager can see that, and I'll let him contact you directly for that question, if that's okay, Gus, okay? So, all right.
I'll load up his comment, and I will get back to him on it.
Okay. You have anything else, Councilor Steve, before I sign you off? Thank you, Councilor Steve. Again, I apologize for missing those chat comments. I do believe that I did resolve the issue. I was unable to get a transcript last night of last night's meetings, but I do believe I did resolve the setting on this, so we should have a transcript hopefully on this as well, that we can distribute all the comments that were done on this. Now move on to Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I'd like to congratulate the Public Safety and Public Works Departments for their fine response on Monday. It seems like Mother Nature is doing nothing but conspiring against us, and the fact that the town continues to respond and respond well, thank you, congratulations on a job well done. With that being said, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be done remotely, and will be on Monday, April 27, 2020, at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Well, if I may adjourn, I do know that one of the Councilors, Steve's comments were I was looking at publicizing the call-in information so that we can have public participation. I will take a look at that for the next meeting, hopefully we can get that, because it's going to be important. If we do have to do this remotely, going for a public hearing, we'll work those kinks out as we go forward, because it is important. This is the best we're going to have for a while, that we get as much public participation as possible, so I will work on that as well. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, and motion, our motion is second. We'll call Madam Secretary.
Councilor Steve's? He says yes. Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Catriona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Joe Van?
Yes.
Councilor McKee?
Yes.
And Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank Cable Access as well, because they're in the town hall running the cameras for this, so we thank them very much for everything they're doing for us to make sure that you're fully informed in the town as we work through this, and please be safe out there. Thank you. With that, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Stay safe.